Marcia Freeman.
Good evening, Ms. Freeman.
Water. H two O.
Tom Michael.
For the Sunday afternoon.
Well. Lock here is a. Call the August 10th, 2020 City Council Committee to hold a order that clerk will call the roll.
Arivolo.
Present.
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Present.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee. McGee. McGee is absent. Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Present.
Nine present. I did hear.
Mike McGee.
Yeah, he's here. So we're all here. Thank you. Under public comment this evening, Jeff Carlisle, representing District Two Boone County Board, is here to speak to us concerning stormwater.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to talk to you one more time and recant the B and W Baxter and Woodman study. Six point three on their study considerations. The Baxter and Woodman Development Plan improves presented on this study was based on conceptual modeling of a south side drain area. The model includes a limited analysis of the existing stormwater sewer system that emits pipes under 24 inches in most cases, and does not include all inlets laterals necessary for the detailed study and the design. The improvements included on this report are conceptual and will require additional analysis and refinement prior to design. Changes to this proposed storage configurations, storage locations, storm sewers, and overland flow routes may be necessary. The proposed storage locations and configurations will require property acquisition. These are proposed locations that are not currently owned by the city that may not be available or desirable. Relocations of these storage facilities may be required to make the project constructable. And. Downstream impacts of increasing stormwater dischargeers to the Kishawaki River have not been analyzed as part of this study. Downstream impacts and associated permitting requirements should be evaluated fully before advancing any recommended improvements to design engineering. Any additional modeling may be needed to assess the effects of increased stormwater flows to the river. This is in six point three in the Baxter and Woodman reporting. There's also a note that says engineering estimates for this work is $9.4 million. This estimate includes an estimated property acquisition for the two stormwater storage areas. I would like the aldermen, men and women to at least bring this to motion to continue the study of this thing and not proceed with this thing at all. And if it does proceed, I would like to ask the citizens to do a review. Thank you.
Okay. Under public forum this evening, we have done, under reports officers, boards, and special committees, the following: building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, there is none to discuss this evening. Under building, planning, zoning, new business, there is none to discuss this evening. Under Public Works unfinished business, we have none to discuss this evening. The majority of this evening's discussion will focus on Public Works new business, which will be presented to us by Director Anderson. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, your honor. First up in the memos is repairs to well number four. Well, number four unfortunately quit pumping water on Tuesday night, July 21st. It's been determined that the B phase of the three-phase service was dead, and the well would have to be, the pump would have to be pulled out to determine the necessary repairs. We received three proposals to do that work. Kohoi Group was the low proposal in $7,950. So I would, my first motion would be to recommend approval of the proposal from the Kohoi Group in the amount of $7,950 for pulling of the pump assembly at well number four. This work will be paid for from the water system depreciation account 0409. Now, because of the emergency nature of this work, when we have a well go down with limited capacities, we go ahead and have that work done. So the pulling of the pump has been completed. And in fact, I just received late this afternoon a cost estimate to make the necessary repairs. So I will have a couple more motions associated with this. So if we want to go ahead and take action on the pulling of the pump, then we can talk about the repairs.
I'll make that motion to pull.
Motion to approve may have a second.
A second.
Second by Arivolo. The motion was made. Okay, and we have motion of second. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes. Alderman Frank.
Brent, is that to just pull the pump? That's not for any repairs?
Yeah, this first, this first motion we're doing is the $7,950 for them to mobilize to the site and pull it up out of the ground.
Additional questions or comments? And I should note, it was Alderman Stevens that made the initial motion. Anybody else have questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? None. All those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Now, in regards to the repairs to well number four, after they pulled it out, they reviewed the motor and the pump assembly, and also did some more diagnostics on the cable system. And it's been determined that we will have to put a new motor in. The bowl assembly and the pump is okay. So that, so that doesn't have to be done, but we will also need a new cable as well. We're not sure yet. We haven't been able to identify the cause of the issue. But it's something has caused the, the, the second lead, the second phase in both the motor and the cable to be bad, to have fault. So we may know more once the pump goes back to the manufacturer. But unfortunately, the warranty on the, on the pump was, or the motor, was a one-year warranty, and so it's not covered by warranty. The cost to, for the new motor and the reinstall is $65,336. The cost to do flush of the system, chlorine flush, if we need to do that, to put it back online, would be an additional $19,761. The last time that we pulled well four and worked on it, we did have to do a flush. So hopefully, this time around, we won't have to. But in case we do, the motion that I would recommend is to approve the proposal from Kohoi Group in the amount of $85,097 for the repairs to well number four as outlined in their proposal dated August 10th of 2020. This work will be paid for from the water system depreciation account. There will be a memo with their proposal attached in the packets for the council meeting, and this will also require a motion to waive the bidding requirement as it does exceed the $20,000 limit.
So what do we want to take first? Motion to waive?
Right.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to waive.
I'll make the motion to waive.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I have a second, Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Arivolo.
Can, can any of this work be done in-house so we can save a lot of cost?
No, it cannot be. That's why we get, we go out and get the pricing to do this work. Unfortunately, we don't have the equipment necessary to do that.
Additional questions or comments? Yes.
Pulling these large pumps is a very specialized well service, and none of our local people do it because it is so big and so heavy.
Does anybody else have a question or comment concerning the motion now on the floor to waive? None. All those in favor, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion to waive is approved unanimously, which then brings us to the proposed motion to have the work done for $85,097, which may be a high estimate. If we don't have to spend that much, we won't. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
I will second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Snow has a question. What kind of timeframe are we looking for? Because I'm assuming if we're getting a new motor or rebuilt, is that something that is going to be a timely thing? Or are we looking at a month?
Well, fortunately, what we were told from the manufacturer today was that right now they're looking at about 10 days out, so which is extremely good for these in this situation. It's probably the best we can hope for. My, my initial reaction is based on the vote tonight with council. If, if okay, I will probably, I would like to be able to tell them to, to order up the, the motor tomorrow. Otherwise, I can wait till a week from, a week from tomorrow to do that. But I would like to get that back in the ground as soon as possible. The sooner we can get to pumping water again, the better off we'll be with the disinfecting process and the cleaning up the bottom. The last time it sat for quite a while before we, we were able to start pumping water again, and I think that's what led to our, our disinfection issues. So I'd like to keep that time turnaround as short as possible.
So we have a motion. And a second. Do we have additional questions or comments concerning the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, and I want to ask, can everybody at home hear everyone clearly this evening? Okay.
Next up, item B.
I guess Alderman Snow, I, it's a little difficult, but it looks like there's more effort being made to speak a little louder and clearer. Thank you.
Item B is the main equipment building, the Digestor Rehabilitation Project, and the Construction Services Work Order from Baxter and Woodman. Again, memo in your packet, their, their work order, proposed work order is attached. The estimated construction cost for the project is $4,710,000. The Construction Services proposal is not to exceed $329,750, which is 7% of the estimated construction cost. I would recommend approval of the Construction Services Work Order from Baxter and Woodman in an amount not to exceed $329,750 for the main equipment building and Digestor Rehabilitation Project, a wastewater treatment plant. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation account, and it's anticipated that this cost would be part of what's paid for from the EPA loan that we are obtaining in order to pay for this project.
I have a motion to that approve.
Snow will make that motion.
Snow makes the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Stevens. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Arivolo.
When do you think we'll hear back from the EPA if we get this grant?
Well, we've already got preapproval, so it's just a matter of going through the process. As far as that process is filling out the application, submitting the application, going out to bid, obtaining the bids, and submitting that information to the state. Bids are due back the first of next month. So after we have the bid opening, we'll be able to submit all that information down to the state, and then there's a review time. So we will hear later this fall.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next up is the snow blower replacement for the street department. Our current street department budget includes $160,000 in the capital line item for the purchase of a new snow blower to replace our 1979 Fair snow blower. Kind of a sad day. That snow blower's been around longer than any of our employees in the Public Works Department. So it's, it's worked out real well for us. Unfortunately, it's got to the point now where we just, we've rebuilt it several times, and it's got to the point where we just can't rebuild it anymore. With that being said, the new snow blower that we're contemplating, each of these units that we got pricing on is, is basically the next size up from the one we currently have. We did that for several reasons. Some of the reasons are, again, that I've listed in the memo. Bonnell Industries, the, the replacement fair unit is $143,502.60. The next little bid was from Leroux, their Leroux D50 model. That's actually from Casper's Truck Equipment, but that was $160,741. Our street department personnel has reviewed each of these units. We went and saw the Leroux in action, as well as the Fair over this past winter season. And we feel that the Leroux is our best option. And those benefits are as follows. The width of the Leroux unit is six inches wider than the Fair unit. That doesn't sound like much, but when you plan on having this unit for a 40-year period, that additional six inches over, over that amount of time will, will be a more, much more efficient, more economical model. We'll be able to put more snow, load, load more snow up in a shorter amount of time, which will save us in overtime costs and wear and tear on the equipment. The other major improvement, or the major difference between the two units is it's a two-stage auger system in the Leroux. Again, in their packet, there was a couple of pictures attached. So if you look at those pictures with the real system on, on the Leroux, it's because when we, we use our snow blower, it's mostly on snow that's already been moved. So we usually mainly to pick up windrows, whether it be on State Street, Logan Avenue, or so forth, or even when we have the drifting and the wind blow, it's, again, we're pushing back the snow that's already been piled. So with that, with the beaters out in front, it tends to chew up the snow pile, loosen it up for the blower to work. Whereas the Fair unit is a single-stage unit. And as it says in their brochure, if you're going on, on new snow, fresh snow, it works better. In fact, its ratings of, of the amount of snow it can push or blow per hour basis is higher than the Leroux. But that's on, on fresh snow, and we don't use our snow blower in that application. So we feel that the, again, the Leroux is a better unit because of that. The other main, major difference between the two is on the cutting edge and the straight. If you look at the Leroux picture, which is why I included the separate picture of the straight on, of the Leroux across the bottom is a straight edge. If you look at, at the first page of the Fair one, you'll see that that bottom line is on an angle. And if you go to put pressure on that bottom, as use it kind of as a scraper, as soon as you pick that up a little bit on the Fair unit, it leaves two little windrows, which requires additional pickup. So on our Fair unit, we've actually added a straight cutting edge to the bottom. Unfortunately, if we were to do that on the new unit, that would void all the warranties, and it would not be covered. So for those reasons, again, we feel that the Leroux is the best unit, and my recommendation would be to approve the proposal from Casper's Truck Equipment for the Leroux D50 snow blower in the amount of $160,741. This equipment will be paid for from the Street Department Capital Fund, number 4157528200.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry. May I have a second? Alderman Frank. Questions, comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Alderman Freeman, please go ahead.
So Brent, refresh my memory when we did the budget. If I recall, there was a couple things that you guys needed, and either we, we forgone something else to get the snow blower, or we got something else instead of the snow blower. Wasn't it just this spring we got something else that, instead of the snow blower, because it was more reasonable?
Well, actually, what happened was we had the snow blower in last year's budget, but we only had budgeted the amount to, to replace the in-kind unit, size-wise. After reviewing the units, we felt it was important to go up to the next size up in order to get those efficiencies and those economies of scale for us. So we forego the, the snow blower last year and to put it in this year's budget with, with a higher budgeted amount. Earlier this spring, you're, I think you're referring to the leaf blowers, and we just decided to put the leaf boulders off to a future, a future time due to the COVID and what was going on, and being unknown as to, as to what was going to happen. And that was basically because the unit that we were originally going to purchase, that company, went out of business.
So leaf blower.
Okay, so we decided to forego the leaf blowers and get the, get the snow blower.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next up, keeping with the snow theme, we're looking to purchase a new, a snow plow for our new used 2015 Ford F-250 that we recently purchased. We received two proposals for that unit. One from Bonnell Industries, $6,176.48. The other from Mineral Truck Equipment in the amount of $7,197. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Bonnell in the amount of $6,176.48 for the new snow plow for wastewater treatment plant truck number 4060. This equipment will be paid for from the wastewater treatment plant capital line item, number 611750. And those are the funds that are remaining, the balance we have remaining out of the $40,000 that was in the original budget for the truck.
May I have a motion of that effect for this purchase?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that, please.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Alderman Freeman, you have the floor. Please proceed.
Okay, Brent, so we replaced something with the 2015 Ford F-250, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm assuming that whatever we replaced had a snow plow on it. So would we not have just taken that snow plow and put it on the F-250? What happened to the other plow?
The vehicle we replaced was a 1995 GMC. And that plow, in order to, to, basically with the hitch and stuff and the couple system to make that work on the new unit was not feasible, which is why we're getting a new plow on this one. So the plow on that truck is staying with it, and in fact, I think that truck is going to end up being at the street department for the mechanics to drive, which will replace the old Dodge Dakota that they have been using as a, as a parts truck for down there.
So did, then did we sell the old plow?
No, it's still, it'll still be with the truck.
On that truck?
It'll still be with the truck.
Oh, okay. So we still, we still have the truck and the plow?
As for right now, we do yet. Ultimately, ultimately, that'll probably be put up for sale. But right now, I think we're going to end up replacing the, like I said, the old Dodge Dakota that the street department's mechanics have currently been using.
Alderman Frank.
Okay. Brent, what do we use this plow for? Just like little areas, like parking lots? Or what do we use this, this one versus the street one?
This one's on the wastewater treatment plant, so it'll be used around the plant, and it'll be used at all the lift stations. Mainly the lift stations cleaned out removal.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, the motion now on the floor, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Brent, could we go back to the snow blower replacement in regards to scrapping it or selling it?
Whoops, I'm sorry. I didn't miss that, didn't I? Okay, I need a second motion on the snow blower regarding, I need a motion to either scrap or sell the 1979 Fair snow blower.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Arivolo.
Are we going to have a retirement party for it?
Well, I was thinking, we could maybe contact the museum and see if they want to have it donated to the museum. We could always do that as an option also.
That'll be my second question.
Anybody else? All those in favor of approval, the motion now on the floor, Will, when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director?
Next up is the wastewater treatment plant thickening centrifuge upgrade. Again, memo in your packet, our city says thickening centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant was installed in 2005. plant was installed in 2005, and it needs to be updated at this time. The updates will include the replacement of the rotating assemblies and modifications to the control panel. The centrifuge unit itself will be sent back to the factory for the rotating assembly work, and their representatives from Centrisis will be out to update the control panel. The cost for the control panel update is $9,750. The estimated cost to update the centrifuge itself is $24,500. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Centrisis for factory updates to the thickening centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant at the estimated cost of $34,250. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation account.
Did you want to waive the bidding process?
No, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Snow. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Arivolo. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow, yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director?
So I should have probably done this one first, but because it's going back to the factory, you're going, getting bids is not practical. So I need a motion to waive the bidding process for this work, as that cost does exceed the $20,000.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Fleury. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Director?
Next up, IMF is the stormwater utility implementation phasing. Again, memo in your packet, Fairgram and their subconsultant Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions has completed and submitted the stormwater utility feasibility study to the city, which we looked at at our last committee meeting. That study concluded that it is feasible for a stormwater utility for the city of Belvedere. And the study also outlined an implementation plan for establishing a stormwater utility. The current budget includes $100,000 for the implementation of a stormwater utility. And attached to this memo is a proposal from Fairgram, an amount not to exceed $95,560 for implementing the stormwater utility. Their proposal itemizes the costs associated with each of the tasks that were identified in the implementation plan. The next phase in this process would be public outreach to educate our residents and gather their feedback on the function of a stormwater utility prior to the city council's final decision on implementing such a utility. I would recommend approval of the task-two outreach portion of the proposal from Fairgram in an amount not to exceed $37,190. And this work will be paid for from line item number 415-110-7900.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
I'll make that second.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Snow has a comment.
Just a moment, please. Just a moment, please. Alderman Frank has the floor right now, Dan. Just a second.
Okay, I'm looking at page two, where it has the two public meetings, the five stakeholder meetings, the two city council meetings. I did the math, it's $4,132 per meeting. I just think that's pretty excessive.
Well, there's some, there's some other work in there besides those meetings. They will, they will produce some information, some both, some handouts for the public, some brochures. There will also have some content that we'll put online on the city's website as well, besides just the meetings themselves. And there'll be a little bit of work on generating the information that's, that's submitted to the community, again, to educate, in an effort to educate the residents, and kind of get their feedback, again, before council makes a final decision. I mean, theoretically, the council could decide now if they don't want, if they want to proceed or don't want to proceed with the implementation of the utility. But I think it's important to gather that feedback, and especially the impacts that it's going to have on, on the larger property owners in the community who will be subject to have that biggest cost involved with such a utility.
Additional questions or comments?
Snow has a comment.
Go ahead, Alderman Snow, sorry.
So as I read this Fairgram stuff, you know, I find it interesting that we have people worried about having the accurate water count and how much rain comes down and everything. This part of the deal is just the implementation to try to get the, lack of the term, the taxing done correctly in a fair, equitable way for everybody. Because ultimately, regardless of how much rain or how much water is generated and needs to be diverted and retained and that, it's, it's all dollars at that point. And we need to start the process of collecting money so we can rectify the situation, regardless of how much water is going to be collected and rectified over the course of time. So I, I, you know, while I do believe the price tag is fairly extensive, but if this is what Brent and the administration think needs to occur in order to accomplish the mission, in order to get this done fair and equitably, I think we need to go ahead and implement it.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. And the mayor would like to make a comment.
I have a comment.
May I make a comment first, Alderman Freeman?
Sure.
Thank you. Every time we have a major storm, we have citizens who come to city council and talk about the damage to their homes, flooding in the streets, damage to vehicles, the inconvenience that all of that has. So in response to that, we created a project and a program to take a look at the feasibility of trying to correct that situation. The Baxter-Woodman study is, is general in scope, is not specific in scope. It took a big look at what the existing issues are and how we could possibly solve those. The Fairgram study is a more specific look at creating a solution. And this is our opportunity to take this to the citizens of our community for their input on this problem. And so I think it's only fair that they have an opportunity to comment on this program before we decide that they don't need to comment on the program and just say, well, this isn't something we should do. It's obviously something that needs to be looked at, because we have this situation every time we have a big rain, with a lot of citizens in the community are rightfully upset because their property floods, or their house floods, or they get stuck in high water for a couple of hours until it recedes. So I think it would be a good idea to at least implement this step to find out what the community really thinks. Alderman Freeman, you have the floor. Please proceed.
Thank you. So I'm on the fence about all of this. As you know, my ward is disproportionately affected by this stormwater flooding. However, we just, you know, I've been here for three and a half years, and we have funded everything for the wastewater treatment plant and budgeted for it as we should. We fund every department, from street to fire to police, with everything from vehicles, remodeling, equipment, all without extra fees. I feel like the number one problem this city faces is our stormwater and flooding issues. And in the three and a half years I've been in Alderman, and I know for some years before that, we've done basically nothing but hire engineers. We've performed a limited sump pump study. And I'm happy that we finally made some progress on the Bellwood and BHF detention ponds. But that's really a drop in the proverbial water bucket. We have the reports, we've paid for, we've, we have the studies, we have all the information. So I think it's time to, the council is briefed on different options and cost effectiveness, anything, you know, that can range from buying properties to routing drainage culverts and anything else beyond. We have the engineering done, we have designs done, we have mapping done, you know, before we consider attaching a forever fee for our residents to endure on their water bills. We've already paid big bucks for all this engineering, and I have yet to hear at any of these meetings what a possible solution is that doesn't come with a $41 million price tag. November 7th of 2018, we got the final design for our West Sixth Street low-flow channel. We're coming up on two years ago for that, and we still haven't implemented or come to the council with any type of price tag or, you know, when we might be moving forward with something like that. I don't see anything on the scope of this project in any of these tasks that we can't relatively perform easily in-house. The outreach could be done basically by the mayor, by taking out full-page ads in our local papers, by distributing pamphlets and surveys in, within our water bill. I don't see why we need to pay Fairgram another 30-some thousand dollars to do what we could probably do cheaper ourselves. Like, we have the information, let's just get together a plan, let's figure out what would be the best and most cost-effective way to solve this problem via short-term and long-term goals, and move on with this.
Director Anderson, would you like to comment?
Sure. As much as I would like to be able to do this in-house and do it ourselves, unfortunately, in the Public Works Department, there's myself, and I have a Public Works Superintendent that takes care of, of all of the departments. And as you can see by the agenda tonight, there's several things and several, a wide variety of issues and several projects. So for me to be able to concentrate solely on the stormwater project, then I'm leaving all my other projects to, basically, I have to put to the side, and I, we just can't do that. We have so much work going on and so many things that we have to get through the office and file through. That's why we use engineer, for engineering firms as much as we do for our city. And we do do a lot, but that's because we are lean and mean, and we don't have a lot of manpower to be able to put in on each individual project like we probably would like to be able to. But, and that's why we lean on the engineers. So as much as I would like to be able to provide those services and to do that work, I just don't have the time available to me at the, with all these other projects that we have going on. One of those such projects is the low-flow channel at Sixth Street that you referenced. You're right, it's been two years now. And unfortunately, because of the requirements, when the Corps of Engineers issued their finding that it's waters of the US, the creek channel there, and so now it's covered by their, their regulations and requirements, we actually met with them earlier this summer. They actually made a site inspection and going through to see if we could determine if there was any way we could utilize a nationwide permit to get the work done there that we wanted to get done. And they basically came back and said, no, there's nothing that, that fits. You will have to do an individual, individual permit. Well, the bad part about the individual permit is it's more lengthy, it's more costly, it's more time-consuming. There's much more involved in getting, in being issued an individual permit. So I'm waiting for the proposal back again through the engineers to tell me what that additional cost is going to be to go through that process. It's a lengthy process, and unfortunately, determination was made that that's the process we have to go through. So that, that project itself is forthcoming, and I'll have more information to council when I, when I receive that. But again, the, the money that we spend from the engineering firms is, is based on how much work effort, how much time is involved with each of these projects. And like I said, when we have a staff of two, basically, in the Public Works Department to manage all the capital improvements, as well as, as the day-to-day operations of the department, we're spread about as thin as you're going to be able to spread us.
Brent, could you just, if you can do this in your head quickly, round numbers, what have we spent on water control since, let's say, 2013, starting with Columbia Avenue and the other projects that we have done and the projects we're doing this summer?
I'd have to, I'd have to sit down and look and come up with a number for you. But again, we're making progress. We, we, as you know, the council has approved the, the bids for the detention ponds at Sixth Street and the new Bellwood facility, so that work will be, be forthcoming. We've also have plans in the works. We've been looking at the Baxter-Woodman plan for that $41 million. That itemized all of the improvements, recommended improvements, a big picture, look at the two main basins on the south side of town. And what it would take to remember, their, their criteria was to bring up the quote-unquote "old" parts of town up into the current subdivision control standard that we have for stormwater. And so any new development that comes into town, we've already accounted for stormwater and made those requirements. Before the, before the, the early eighties, any of the development that was done, they didn't even look at stormwater. That wasn't even considered. So the background for the Baxter-Woodman study was to be able to bring those up to date, which is why it talks about creating detention facilities and doing up, upsizing the different pipes and stuff to handle because of the lack of the detention facilities, frankly, for what was built in that old part of town. So one of the options that we looked at also was in the more individual basis, is looking at putting in a bypass pipe in lieu of the detention facility that was required around the Washington School area. And it looks like that's feasible and that will work, but that's got a $5 million price tag. So we got to come up with a $5 million somewhere. Now, in the wastewater treatment plant, as you alluded to, being able to fund that, that's correct. It's a wastewater utility. We have a, we have your utility rates that, that all the users that pay for, and that's what generates that income that we are able to set aside to be able to bond, to be able to go out and get the, acquire the EPA loan projects to pay for those big-ticket projects. Similar scenario that could be utilized here in this case for that $5 million price tag for the, for the overflow storm sewer along Fifth Avenue, to take care of that recommendation in the Baxter-Woodman plan, would be to do that same scenario where we go out to bond for that. And if we had that storm sewer utility in place, the revenue generated from that storm sewer utility would cover that bond, and therefore you're not taking up the, the city's general obligation bonds. It's being paid for directly by the utility. That's probably what your, your, your single biggest benefit for establishment of the stormwater utility is the bondability and, and that fund that you had dedicated fund, just like you do for water and sewer. We use no tax money, no tax dollars for Water and Sewer Department. It's all paid by the user fees, and that's, the storm sewer system would be set up that same way. And that's part of the reason why the costs are there to establish that, is to make sure when you set it up initially, you set it up according to those parameters so that everybody is quote-unquote paying their fair share of, for the stormwater runoff that's being created on the property that they own.
Alderman Frank, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, did we do bids on this? Are there anybody else that we included in this, on this?
Not for this phase, no. Again, for professional services, for engineering firms, you do not go to bid. You can ask for statements of, of interest and qualifications, and then you do the interviews, and you basically negotiate then with your highest choice, which is what we did prior to selecting Fairgram to do our stormwater utility. We went through the interview process and the review process and arrived at the conclusion that Fairgram, we thought, was in the best position to provide that service for us.
Alderman Stevens can attest to that. He was part of the committee that...
He was part of the committee that was, did the review.
Yes, there were like five firms we interviewed and we kind of went down the decision-making of who we, we thought could do the job the best, who had the most experience in it. And we came up with this company right here, the Fairgram.
Alderman Flurry, yes, sir.
So the, the motion that we're talking about now is basically to bring the implementation to, bring it to the public so that we can get some feedback from the citizens.
Yes, basically, get the, get the word out, um, do a little bit of education, have at least one of the open houses. And we don't necessarily have to do all of the implementation and spend that entire amount. Um, if we do the open house, at a minimum, I'm thinking you're going to want to do at least public, one public open house, um, to get that, to get that word, to have that interaction. And then at least probably two or three of the stakeholder meetings to go through with the largest property owners, uh, in the municipality and to be able to go through those impacts and what that's going to be to get their feeling, feedback. And then once the council gets that, maybe, maybe that provides clear enough direction to the council on, on what they ultimately decide they want to do, whether, excuse me, whether they want to go forward or not go forward at this time.
And I think the presentation made by a third party. Uh, I appreciate what, uh, Alderman Freeman said, but coming from us, it's the city telling people, this is what we want to do. Coming from a third-party professional firm that was vetted to provide us this study, to talk to the public, I think is a much wiser way to, uh, get feedback and, and buy it. Yes, Alderman Frank?
Well, we also have to keep in mind that not many people can come to these meetings because they have to be 10 people in attendance, right? For the Phase Four?
No, actually, you can have up to 50 people if you have a large enough facility to accommodate that. And, and their, Fairgram is willing to be flexible with how we have to address doing night, these meetings.
Another question?
Yes.
Alderman Flurry? So, again, as we go through this implementation, have the public's feedback, you know, if it becomes that most people aren't in favor of it, you know, what is the alternative plan? It sounds like this has been a problem for several years, so is that going to be included? Because when most people hear about, you know, getting another fee, they're going to say, "No." But what is the alternative? Just having people have their basements keep being flooded or what's the next step if we don't go with this?
Well, if you, if you don't go with this, then you will be using, um, general fund revenues to, um, pay for storm sewer projects as they're presented to you. So the next in line as far as storm sewer projects go, again, would be probably, and that's what we looked at, is through the Baxter Woodman Report and what was there and to get our best bang for our buck, to have the most impact on the neighborhoods, um, at the least amount of cost, would actually be that bypass that I referenced earlier on, on Fifth Avenue, uh, a 72-inch equivalent storm sewer bypass to the river, um, and that $5 million price tag. So it'd be a matter of the council finding a, a revenue stream or utilizing funds, would some, probably have to be an obligation or some type of bond or something in order to complete that project.
We've all been through the budget process and it's a very lean budget process. And with this year, we don't know what's going to happen. Right now, we're fine. We're starting to get revenue back from gaming slowly, uh, motor fuel tax is starting to accelerate again. We don't know what next year looks like and we don't know how long this thing is going to keep on. But if you look at the history of the budgets for the last several years, we've run a very tight and thin budget. If, you can't take $5 million out of the, okay, you can't rob Peter and pay Paul because you take $5 million on a new project, it has to take away from something else. So is it, do we not buy equipment when equipment breaks down? Um, it's, it's a complicated thing. It's like your household budget.
I have a comment.
You have to decide what you're going to spend the money on. Yes, Alderman Freeman, go ahead.
So basically, I mean, we all know that we have an issue and it's going to cost a lot of money. So at some point, we have to figure out where it's coming from and, um, doing the stormwater utility fee is pretty much how we've discussed paying for this. So we're going to basically pay Fairgram, uh, what is it, $30-some thousand for PR to try to convince people, a handful of people probably that will show up for the meetings that are adamantly against it, to be for it, um, because we're going to end up having to do it anyway.
But if you don't include the public, and it's taxpayer dollars that fund everything that we do with the city, it's a multi-step process. We have to allow the public to weigh in on it, positive or negative. At that point, it comes back to the council to make a decision whether we move ahead with this. What Fairgram, and they've done this in many, many, many cities, what this essentially does, and I think if people understand that it might be $5 to $8 every two months, uh, as an additional charge for utility, that we will do this project over time and as Brent said, it's a funding source that would allow us to bond out to do the bigger projects, just like we do with the wastewater treatment plant. Water is an issue and water is an issue that's not going to go away. And no, we did not consider this 30 or 40 or 50 years ago. And that's why we have the issue that we have now. Fortunately, these storms will dump water and in two or three hours, most of the water has made it to the river, overland or, but it still sits some places. It's because we built a subdivision on a wetland. And yes, we have a shallow and a deep aquifer that provide excellent water from Belvidere and Boone County. But this is a problem that somebody has to fix at some time. And we do not have the funds in the city to take $5 million and start putting into a project for stormwater management every year. We need to bond it out and pay it out over time. That's how you pay for things, just like when you buy your house. And so the public absolutely needs to be involved in having a say-so in this. Then it would come back to the council and the council can vote it up or vote it down or if they want to vote to go to referendum with it, we can put it in a referendum and have the entire community vote on it. But it's not going to solve the problem if we don't have the conversation. And we decided that we'd heard in every year, every year since, 16 years now, that I've been an Alderman. Every time we have a big rainstorm, we have people that come here and tell us about the issues that they've encountered because of the stormwater. And we're not the only community that has this. But this is a, is a modern world and we're trying to fix the things, the problems that we've had with our roadwork, with our sewer and water. People here like the fact that we have the lowest sewer and water rates in the region and have had for a number of years. We have not been, made the investments until a few years ago on the problem areas like Columbia Avenue, but it was time to figure it out. So we went through the process that a professional organization does to find a professional engineering firm to tell us, okay, what does it look like? How big is this problem? And then to find a solution, which is what we've done over the last year, is gone through those steps. And everybody knows the numbers and they're big numbers. So I, I guess it's up to you guys tonight to decide whether you want the professionals that have made the proposal to present the proposal to the folks that come to the meetings or we just want to do it word-of-mouth, put it on the website, take an ad in the paper. I want those professionals here to explain it because I am not a hydrologist or a professional engineer who understands water. And I don't think that there's anybody on this council that is. I think Brent's the closest we've come to, to having a profound understanding in the Public Works Department. So I, I think that it's, it's clear that we need, should at least take this step to get the public's opinion before going forward. Alderman Frank?
I have two things. Um, would Fairgram be, um, willing to negotiate some of these fees?
Brent?
Uh, well...
Alderman McGee has a comment?
As far as, as far as the negotiate, um, that's basically what they've determined their work effort was going to be to accomplish the items that's listed in their proposal.
And yes, sir? Someone had a comment? Alderman McGee, you have the floor.
Alderman McGee? Yeah, I'm not opposed to, uh, finding a solution, um, but I do have one concern in that one concern is, uh, the Task Two, part of the Task Two Stormwater Utility Outreach is having two public meetings. And we're in the middle of a pandemic with COVID-19. I personally just don't think that it's fair to the public to try to hold a public meeting at the community building, um, at this time. Um, whether we decide to table this thing until this pandemic's over, um, makes more sense to me, but I just want to throw that out there and see what everybody thinks.
Alderman Porter?
Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Did you say go ahead?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, I agree with Alderman McGee on that and I was actually going to bring up that point too. Uh, and short of tabling it, I would also like to see a vote, uh, to put this on a binding referendum. I think we should let the public, uh, you know, decide this one after we make our case, either the city or, or Fairgram, uh, as to it being needed. So I, if we can't do the vote tonight, I would like to have, to put on the agenda for the next possible meeting to take a vote on a, putting this on a binding referendum.
I think the city attorney may want to weigh in on that.
I would have to check the, uh, election schedule because I have not looked at in some time to see when a, uh, when the council had to adopt its resolution submitting something to a non-binding referendum. Uh, we may be late for this fall, I'd have to check on that. That being said, referendums, binding or non-binding, um, cost money. And it's not necessarily costing the city, but it's costing the taxpayers for the, uh, county clerk to draw up the question, have it present, printed on the ballot. And I, I care about what she said one time, but it's not an insignificant sum. I would recommend that if you are thinking about doing a non-binding referendum, uh, that if you're going to move forward with your public outreach first anyway, do that and then make a decision whether you want to do your referendum or not. Uh, that would seem to me to make the most sense. Um, another problem with, with non-binding and binding referendums, um, and specifically non-binding referendums, this is just a personal, um, observation. Because they're non-binding by their nature, um, all you're going to do is get the pulse of the community as to whether they want to, something or not. And the problem is when they're in the polling place, they may or may not be educated on it. So if you're going to do a non-binding referendum, you're going to have to engage in some kind of an educational program so that people understand what you're asking them to vote upon. Um, there's costs involved with that as well. And so I guess the question comes down to if the council's going to abide by the non-binding referendum, then it makes sense to do it. If it's just to gauge the feeling of the community, but you're going to do what you're going to do anyway, it doesn't seem worth the expense of doing that. I've seen plenty of situations in the past where communities held non-binding referendums, the vote came down one way and they did the exact opposite anyway. And they have a big problem on their hands, uh, dealing with the community. So it's not just something you jump in and do, I'd certainly discuss it. I can look as to what the dates are that the resolution has to be passed, to submit it to the county clerk. Um, but it might make sense, if you're going to do this community outreach first, to do that and then come back and have your referendum.
This is the mayor and it's just occurred to me, we could ask Fairgram to come back, uh, to one of our meetings soon and explain chapter and verse what their public outreach will be. When they put together this schedule, it was before we were in, in the, the depth of this COVID-19 situation. And perhaps they have some other ideas that could incorporate some of the things that Alderman Freeman had posited, uh, mailing, uh, an outreach, uh, via the internet, via the, the website, and see if they could work with us on, on a program like that, that we could get an initial feedback. Um, and, you know, it, it comes down to this, our job as administration and the council of the city is to use the very best people possible to help us solve our problems and then ask of the public what they think about it. If you know the history of referendums in, in the city of Belvidere and Boone County, uh, Marcia made a very, uh, significant comment. She said, "All you get are the naysayers." Well, I, I think we have to listen to the naysayers too. So would it make sense to, uh, have Fairgram come and explain and we could work with them to craft their public outreach to fit the situation right now, uh, to do a better job of, of getting feedback from, from the public? How's that sound to the rest of the council? Yes, Alderman?
Right now, um, I, there's too many unknowns for me, so I would vote no for, for now. I mean, if, if they come and they have some answers, but the fees are what's, uh, getting me.
What fees?
Are there fees for all these, uh, and the left fees?
Okay. So we don't really want to pay them to do their work.
Alderman Freeman?
Yes, Alderman Freeman, go ahead.
So I agree, um, with Alderman Porter and Alderman McGee that I don't think it is fair during a pandemic to ask the public to come and learn about this. And I would agree with you, um, mayor, that a better way to do it is via mail, is via surveys, is, um, via any other way but public. And, you know, maybe, um, maybe do, you know, you have your Mayor Mike Show, maybe do some public service-type announcements explaining to people what this is, maybe take out some ads in the paper. Uh, you know, I don't know, but I don't think that, um, public meetings at this time, I mean, I'm not even coming to council meetings, so, um, I don't think it's, it's the right time to be implementing those.
Well, you're absolutely right. We can do this on, on the YouTube setting on a weekly basis with updates. I can have Fairgram come and make a presentation that will be in the can so people can watch it at their leisure. Yes, Ms. Tobin?
I was just going to say, a lot of us who have been working through this pandemic have found different ways to hold larger meetings and so many things are virtual right now. I mean, I'm sure you do too, where your entire pamphlet, you get online, you call in, you're listening to it, you can ask questions and then you have the entire slides, you have all the, um, the entire, all the documents right in front of you that way. And that's how we've been working for the last four months. Um, it's just the way things are and I'm sure Fairgram, um, is up to speed on this as well.
We could do Zoom meetings, have 100 people log into a Zoom meeting that's manageable if you have somebody who knows, who's running the controls with Zoom.
I mean, I guess we could do like a call-in, send everybody something to call in and have them do their presentation. But again, when, when you're at home and, you know, if Fairgram were on my TV right now, I would have a really hard time hearing them. So I think the public would not really gain a whole lot from that.
We're talking of logging in on, on a device, like your laptop, your iPad, your iPhone. A Zoom meeting is live. And we just ordered, and unfortunately, our new equipment for City Hall for the council chambers is backordered. Go figure. It's coming from China, right? So, so what, do you want to just put, table this for the time being?
Should we table this until we can come up with, um, a way that we want to, um, go forward?
Well, why don't we talk to Fairgram and put together, work with them to, to figure out a different way to propose this and just table this for the time being? May I have a motion to table?
Perfect.
A motion by Frank.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, are we tabling this to...
Alderman McGee?
Are we going to table this to the next committee meeting of the whole or specifically to a Public Works Committee meeting?
What's your pleasure, folks? Public Works Meeting is the director's pleasure. Does that sit right with everybody? So it is said, so it is done. All those in favor?
That means it's a month from now.
Excuse me?
That means it'll be a month from now.
That's correct.
Okay. That gives Fairgram some time to respond to.
All those in favor of tabling, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
First, I had Frank make the motion and I need a second.
McGee made the second.
Okay. Stevens?
Yes.
Rivalo?
Aye.
Brereton? Rivalo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
It is now tabled until the next, for a month, anyway. Thank you. Under number five, other, there has been a discussion about moving the city council meeting time to coincide at the same time of the day that we do committee of the whole meetings. May I have a motion to that effect? It'll be 6:00 PM, by the way.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rivalo, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion?
Snow?
Yes, Alderman Snow.
Um, not a big fan. I got to tell you, going to this meeting at 6 o'clock can be a challenge. By the time I get off work, get dinner underway and situated and done, and then do this meeting, to have them all at 6 o'clock. There was obviously a reason that they were put at 7:00. I can't imagine typically, most council meetings don't run long because most of the information is hashed out and explored at, like, tonight's meeting of the committee. So I'm going to be voting no.
Okay, additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, there was not discussed in the original motion, but I would recommend not starting any move of the meeting times until the month of September. We do have at least one public hearing scheduled for next Monday night at 7:00 PM in this room. So we have to start that the early September, maybe October, to give a chance to, to get used to the new schedule if we go that route.
Alderman Rivalo, what do you want, September, October?
I have a comment.
No, it's fine. I'll just say that.
What did Drabba say?
Couldn't start until September because we have a public hearing coming up. So September wouldn't begin until September or October. And I ask Alderman Rivalo which he preferred in his motion.
That'd be fine if it gets, October would be fine.
October would be fine. So we would begin in October with the first council meeting in October. Any additional questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So I don't think it's a good idea. I'm with Alderman Snow. I think a lot of people that work in the city, out of town, would have a hard time coming to the meetings if there was something on the agenda that they wanted to be at the meeting for. I think that that's why if they can't make the 6 o'clock one, they can always make the 7 o'clock one if it's something that's important to them. And I, I don't think that it's a good idea.
Alderman Rivalo?
I don't want to be 100% sure, but I think I'm the furthest one that commutes almost every day near Chicago suburbs, and I'm still here at 6 o'clock, still have my dinner, still mow the lawn. So if I have to leave a little bit early for work, I do, and I make that up afterwards. So I don't think it will be that implausible to get here always at 6 o'clock and mainstream it.
And I understand things are important to people, but I have to be honest with you. I don't, I don't eat dinner nights that we have meetings, 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock, and I haven't for 16 years. So, you know, it's up to you guys.
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Freeman?
I have a question for Alderman Rivalo. What is the purpose of wanting every meeting at 6? Like, why is it that you are seeking this? What's the reason?
The reason is just to have it more fluid with everything else that we do from work. Because there's a big gap for me from coming after work and coming to the meeting. It would just be nice and fluid if it just starts at 6:00. And however long the meetings end, it ends. So at least I still have time to do everything else I have to do before the next day, I have to go to work or anything I have to do at home.
Yeah, Alderman Flurry?
I have a question, going with you, Alderman. If we're just trying to make it more uniform, because everything else, all other meetings have a set time, they're always the same, and obviously for committees of the whole and council, they go back and forth from 6:00 to 7:00. What if we split the difference and said 6:30? That way it could be a uniform time, and I think that would still give people the ability to work late to get there on time. And that way it's always the same, and no one has to worry about checking their schedule, and it's a clear thing.
So do we want to amend the motion or just state the motion as 6:30 instead of 6:00?
Whatever the council wants, I just brought, wanted to bring this up so you get a lot of the feedback from what everybody wants to do. I just wanted to save having the late meeting start at 7:00, just start a little bit earlier.
So what do you guys want to do? Alderman Frank?
Well, I, I guess Snow has a comment. You know, if, if Rivalo needs to get some stuff done, he can get it done from the time that extra hour before 6:00 to 7:00.
Let's, let's be...
I, I don't see...
Wow. Alderman Frank?
Well, I think we're meeting for our constituents. It's not for our own means, but sometimes I do have a hard time, because if I'm dog sitting, I have to let a dog out at dinnertime and then get back into town. But it's not about us. It's about our constituents that want to come for public comment. And I do like the 6:30 better than the 6:00.
Other questions or comments? So do we want to restate the motion as make all of our meetings at 6:30?
Mr. Mayor, you have a current motion, a second to... This is Mike speaking out, speak up, sorry, Dan. I got a computer in front of my face, so that makes it harder too. The current motion on the floor is a motion to change the city council meetings beginning in the month of October from 7:00 to 6:00. If you want to do something differently, you should either withdraw the motion at the request of the movement in the second or amend the motion as it's stated.
Motion to amend to 6:30?
I'll make that motion.
By Rivalo, second.
I'll second that.
And again, is that for just city council meetings or is that for city council and committee meetings?
Both, to 6:30. Second by Stevens. All those in favor of amending the motion to be 6:30 for each meeting, whether it be committee or council? Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Rivalo?
For clarification, I'll leave one of the city council meeting, not the committee of the whole. Committee of the whole is fine at 6:00 PM.
Now we're going sideways, folks. So we're voting on making the meeting standardized at 6:30. So that's the current motion. So we're voting to amend the original motion to have them at 6:00. All those in favor, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Rivalo?
Aye.
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Nay.
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
No.
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Three in favor?
Motion is lost. Amendment to the motion is lost, which takes us back to the original motion to have all the meetings at 6:00 PM. All those in favor of having all the meetings at 6:00 PM? Excuse me? Having all the meetings at 6:00 PM, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
No.
Nay.
Aye.
Radcliffe?
No.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Rivalo?
Aye.
Three in favor?
Motion is lost. We'll leave the meetings just the way they are, which then completes our agenda for this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
By Alderman Rivalo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.